Join Yvette Walker every Tuesday at 4 o'clock PM on KMET ABC News Radio, 1490 AM, FM 98.1, and Internet KMET TV for the Southern California Business Report. The show is dedicated to highlighting successful businesses and the individuals behind them. Yvette interviews the incredible people managing these enterprises that range from awe-inspiring sole proprietors to world-renowned organizations. The Southern California Business Report, Tuesdays at 4 o'clock PM. Welcome to KMET 1490 AM ABC News Radio and the Southern California Business Report with Yvette Walker, a show dedicated to highlighting successful Southern California businesses and the people behind them.
Welcome and thank you for joining the Southern California Business Report on ABC News and Talks, KMET 1490 AM, 98.1 FM, and KMET TV. I'm Yvette Walker, live blasting our signal out of the center of Southern California, serving a population of over 25 million. Get us crystal clear and on demand by downloading the free KMET livestreaming app on Google Play or the Apple App Store. A huge shout out to the team Mitch, Bill, and Sean, you know, you have my heart, and to our special advisory committee, Bill Morris of UCI School of Business, Diane Cavalo, and Camila Rubio, thank you so much. Don't forget to check out The Jay Kaplan Show, also on KMET, on Fridays at 3. So today, I'm so incredibly happy, excited, elated to introduce a leader of the San Bernardino County Board of Supervisors, talking about the overall state of the county, business data, efforts the county has taken to support local businesses and create a thriving environment, and so much more. Today is my distinct privilege to introduce today, Mr. Kurt Hagman. Kurt Hagman was elected to serve San Bernardino County's 4th District in November of 2014, and was named Chairman of the Board of Supervisors in January 2019. The 4th District includes the cities of Chino, Chino Hills, Montclair, Ontario, and the southern portion of Upland. It spans approximately 133 square miles and is home to over 400,000 residents. Supervisor Hagman has an extensive resume of public service prior to his election to the San Bernardino County Board of Supervisors, including serving Chino Hills as Parks and Recreation Commissioner, Member of City Council, and Mayor, and served six years in the California Legislature. In January 2019, Hagman was elected by his fellow supervisors to serve as Chairman of the Board for a two-year term. As a Board of Director of the Southern California Association of Governments Regional Council, he was selected as Chairman of the Emerging Technologies Committee. The Emerging Technologies Committee researches and identifies new and emerging technologies that play an important role in the regional transportation plan and the sustainable community's strategy. A highlight for the supervisor had been his role in the successful transfer of returning Ontario International Airport to local control in 2016. Supervisor Hagman was able to reach across party lines and work behind the scenes to re-initiate serious dialogue between LAWA and OIAA on the transfer of control that led to the final agreement. As one of five Commissioners on the OIAA, he presently serves as Chairman of the OIAA Ad hoc International Trade Committee. Along with supervisory duties, Hagman also serves on the following boards and organization: Governing Board Chairman of the Inland Empire Health Plan, which oversees the decisions and operations of the Public Health Plan, Inland Valley Development Agency, National Association of Counties, Omni-Trans, Southern California Association of Governments, San Bernardino County Transportation Authority, Commissioner of Ontario International Airport Authority, and is an officer in the California State Military Reserves. Supervisor Hagman earned a Bachelor of Arts degree in Psychology at UCLA. His children are continuing the Bruin tradition. Jonathan is currently attending a Public Policy Master's Program at UCLA and a Second Lieutenant in the Army National Guard. And Elizabeth is a freshman at UCLA in the Army ROTC. Thank you so much for joining us today Supervisor Hagman. That is quite the formidable resume and introduction. Thank you for joining us today.
Thank you for having me. It's actually the first time I've heard it all the way through, and we'll have to shorten that up a little bit. It takes up all your time just to go through the committees. But thank you for having me on.
Well, thank you so much. And I'm so excited to start digging in and talking about the state of the county of San Bernardino. But before we go there, let's talk a little bit about your history and what moved you to become the public servant you are today.
To be truthful, I kind of fell into it. I was a volunteer holic in my home city of Chino Hills when I had my own business going. And I always liked getting things done. Maybe it's from my Eagle Scout days and my military days in the past. But as I got more things done, people brought more things for me to do. I got talked into becoming a Parker Recs Commissioner. And then my first taste of public policy is on one of the county's Workforce Investment Board, and that has to be 25-plus years ago. And to go with a bunch of other folks and kind of change directions by advocating and working together and seeing the great results from that. We went from one of the lower-performing ones to the higher-performing ones in two years. That really gave me the bug. And so I started off there, go into council, and the rest is history.
Well, boy, obviously, you are a natural for this. When people are seeking you to find solutions for, you know, challenges, and you're inclined to do it with, you know, your background in Eagle Scouts and the Army and everything, it's such a natural and perfect combination. It's very clear in the work that you've done. So today, I'm so happy that you're going to be talking about just an overview of the state of the county for San Bernardino County, which, as we know, and maybe some of our listeners don't know, is literally the largest county in America per square miles.
Yeah, absolutely. Oh, no, I was gonna add to that. We talked about my district being like 103 miles. The county itself is over 21,000 square miles, which is bigger than nine states in size, and actually bigger than some countries, as well as bigger than like 12 or 14 states in population. So we don't really realize that, but it's a big area.
It is a very big area. So I'm very excited to cover the state of the county and what it is that you're doing, because there is a lot to dig into and a lot of positive, you know, cutting-edge exemplary things that you're doing, which, you know, explains all of your incredible accolades and recognitions for the county. So let's start by talking about the advantages that San Bernardino County offers to their local businesses as we move forward and the overall state of the county.
No, thank you. I think there's so many of them. I mean, first of all, the state of the county is doing very well right now. We're one of the fastest-growth areas in the United States. In fact, we're expected to increase our population by 9% and job growth 38% in the next 10 years, which is just amazing numbers, especially when it talks about leaving California. I think they're leaving other cities and other counties and coming to San Bernardino County. I think there's a lot of things to do with it. First of all, we're a young population. Their average age is 33 years old. And we have multiple education opportunities here from, you know, trade schools as well as colleges and universities. We also have this great infrastructure network of freeways and rail. So we move things around. And so we have all the basics of a state, all the one area, plus a lot of room to expand. And so people moving out here because it's cheaper to live and they're finding good employment, and it's a good way to start this younger families. So it gives us a good bright future.
That is remarkable. So can you share with us what businesses or industries you're seeing the most growth in our county today?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. In the, over the last 10 years, we continue to experience growth in logistics, transportation, warehousing, which is about 8% growth, which, you know, the Ports Valley and Long Beach come through, and we're like the hub for the Western United States, if not the United States, the gateway for the rest of it with that infrastructure we talked about earlier, as well as education. Manufacturing is way up, which is really exciting to see those type of jobs coming back to county, as well as healthcare. And we were frankly one of the top 25 best-performing large metro areas in the nation by the Milk Institute just recently. So we know we're going in the right direction.
That is so phenomenal, super encouraging and uplifting, and a great way to close the year. So what factors support more business growth within the county of San Bernardino?
Well, first of all, you have to have a, I think, administration that's willing to work with businesses. And I like the fact that our board, and we brought a lot of private sector folks onto our staff to really understand business. It's hard to say, "I'm in government and here to help you," when you've never written a payroll check in your life and never had to do anything. And fortunately, a lot of my members, my board, have been in the private sector, including myself. So we get it that you're in constant competition and that you have to be innovative. So we sit down and we're trying to be very pragmatic. We're not a political county like others. We follow the rules, but at the same time, we try to work with businesses to help them succeed. So we talked about also the infrastructure network that we have, you know, all the freeways, the roads, the power networks, everything that you need to start businesses here, labor pool, and the educational facilities. So you come back together with that, and we have a great staff to come out and help industries relocate to our county. I think that sets a lot of it up. So we're hoping that continues. We're really advancing a lot of the first-of-its-kind transportation networks in the county, too. We're working on a tunnel by the Boring Company right now to connect MetroLink to Ontario International Airport, which will be the first of its kind in California. We're doing a Redlands Rail with the first CMO, that's Zero Emissions Rail Car. So we really like to think two steps ahead, not just one, in our infrastructure improvements going forward.
Right, and the last time we spoke, you mentioned that you had put into a budget six Starlink satellites in order to provide Wi-Fi service for all of San Bernardino County, which was, it just, it blew my mind when I heard it, and I was so excited to hear it. And I heard recently that SpaceX actually launched several satellites. And so my burning question to you was going to be, were any of those satellites the ones that are going to be hovering over San Bernardino County?
I don't know. I know there's a huge network. They're launching thousands of them. And I know they plan to go live for consumer use, probably sometime, hopefully next year, where they keep changing dates a little bit as they launch more and more satellites. We've been fortunate to beta test six of our sites in the county. It's hard to get internet in the middle of the desert in some places. And some of our parks, like Alka-Gos Town, it was hard even to have Wi-Fi or anything for people to enjoy the history there or the merchants to do business. So we're putting the Starlink there, and some of our parks is to try it out. And it's been quite successful. We're excited to go more with that as they come on to being online for the rest of the world. We're hoping to be part of that. So we'll have infrastructure when that's internet or the roads and everything else to go forward with in the future.
Right, and so you are on the Emerging Technologies Committee. And to me, that was the most cutting-edge technology to learn of. Is there any other technology we should be prepared to see coming down the pipeline?
I'm excited. In fact, I just had a, we just had a meeting with the governor's office a couple of days ago that's going to allow us to start to explore underground tunneling. I talked about the Boring Company to move passengers underground for our four-and-a-half-mile loop. But you can imagine the future, taking the trucks off the freeways and moving cargo containers underground, four to five feet beneath us, silently electric rail to be able to pop up and go the last half-mile to a warehouse throughout the valley and beyond. So we really are trying to explore the infrastructure improvements for transportation, housing. I think you see a lot of that change in the future. You know, we already are changing as consumers, the way we shop, and how do we adjust to that, drones delivering our packaging. We started a drone center of excellence in San Bernardino County, probably one of its kind in California, if not the nation, that's really focusing to bring manufacturers, students to train to be pilots, the businesses like Amazon and others to come together and really explore the future of aerial delivery. So there's a lot going on here in San Bernardino County. We're excited and very proud of it.
Absolutely. And so let's just hit it one more time. How does having this technology and how does, you know, dedicating your efforts to making sure that we all have access to the things that we need and looking at innovative ways to deliver, you know, goods, how does that benefit our local businesses, our local families, and the overall state of the county?
Well, there's so much that's going to be improved for us. So just take the internet. If you don't have access to high-speed internet at home, you saw how hard it hit for students and businesses that didn't have it during COVID times. And for the future, you have to have high-speed internet. So that will allow everybody on an even playing field, whether you're in your cabin at Big Bear or you're right in the heart of Ontario Business Center. So as a small business person, you have access. You could do a lot of things online. We're transforming that into medical. So now, we took big advances during COVID to allow people to see their doctors virtually, like we're doing now. But the future of that is to have devices you hook up on yourself at home or maybe at a CVS or one of our health clinics, and a physician or specialist can see this halfway around California to read your readings and give you a diagnosis without leaving your home. We're actually starting with the county this last week, handing that at-home COVID test for people to take at home. So, and then especially for getting the trucks off the freeway. I think we all agree with that. It helps us move around and not waste time on freeway traffic. If we can get some of those trucks off the road and move that cargo underground, it allows us to do our commuting back and forth to our primary jobs or our schools or just for fun, get around a lot quicker and be much more efficient here in San Bernardino County than we are in other places where gridlock can take hours away each day of your life. So I was excited. All these infrastructures will help us all have a, hopefully, a better quality of life in the future.
Absolutely. And do you think when we get that, the Boring Company in here, which is an Elon Musk company, do you think we can get them down here to do like a tour of his amazing technology right here in our county?
Well, I think it's not well-known, and so I'm not going to say the location. But I did get them to move their testing facility, where they're doing all the research and testing here to our own county of San Bernardino. So they're high desert, like little gophers drilling holes all around and discovering what the future of technology is that. It is very amazing technology. Tunneling's been around for, you know, decades, but the way they have it done, they could build a completed tunnel as about as fast as you could walk. And so these projects that would take us to build a road that would take two or three years on surface, they could build in six months or less, completed, start to finish. And so I'm really excited to see it taken off and to really embrace it more as a country, as a state, as that technology gets more standard. Right now, it's at the cutting edge, so there's a lot of rules and environmental things that we're working through in California. As you know, we're not the friendliest when it comes to those. And so once we get this first project done, I think it's a lot easier to unveil later on.
That's so incredible. I'm so excited, and I can't wait to watch that, you know, be unveiled and the ribbon cutting in at the whole nine yards. So also, Ontario International Airport is a major transportation asset in San Bernardino County. It recently celebrated its five-year anniversary of local control. Let's talk about where the airport is today.
Oh, it's so exciting to see that come up. We really need to have a backup local control. And currently, we're the fastest-growth airport in the United States, according to Global Traveler. And it's exciting to see that. Now we're growing in both cargo, which became a huge hub, you know, logistics chain, especially for COVID, but in passengers. And so we're the fastest recovery airport, we're the fastest-growing airport right now, and we're over 90% what we had just prior to COVID. So while the rest airports were taking a long time to recover, we kind of bounced back very quickly. And by just this September, we're at 97% of the pre-pandemic levels, which is amazing, a testament to the folks that really found that Ontario, it's such an easier place to fly out of. So it's our job to keep enticing more and more airlines to come there, which we're doing. I wish I could announce the new international travel we'll have in February, which are scheduled to come in. It's exciting. It's going to be Europe. I won't say what airline, what cities yet, but there are three of them there. We should have our Taiwan, China Airlines flight back in February. It's all contingent, especially on the international ones. A lot of what the quarantine policies of the countries are and where we are of COVID. But they're scheduled to come in. We're going to be expanding our cargo operations as well. But to see a very underutilized asset for over 20, 30 years, sitting in our, you know, just a diamond in its rough, now that we're able to take the local control and bring it to its potential, see how fast it's growing, it's exciting. And looking forward, we started flying to Hawaii, so people don't know that yet. You can take direct flights to Honolulu right now from Ontario Airport Daily, which is a great addition. And we're hoping for us more, I guess, vacation destinations here in Mexico very soon as well, as well as all the domestic connections we have. So it's exciting to see the airline grow.
I know one of your recent ones is Aha Airlines, which flies, you know, direct Torino and back, I guess, right? That's one of the local ones.
Absolutely. And in fact, my son-in-law-in-law are coming, or my stepson-in-law-in-law are coming in on a flight this week on that new flight. So it's very convenient for us, too.
Very nice.
So it helped us in the family get together this week.
So can you show, share a little bit more about the airport's growth and what you think is going to be coming on the horizon sometime, you know, in the next year or two?
Well, we're looking at, in 2012, we have 5.5 million passengers. We're hoping to get it to, at the maximum at some point in the future, 25 to 30 million. So we still have quite a bit of growth yet to go. And we're on that pathway right now as more and more of these airlines start to come in and find out that not only we're easy to get in and out of, excuse me, that we are also going to be able to go to more destinations, more connections, that sort. We, as a board, are now looking at what we can invest in the infrastructure to help that growth continue to grow. So we're actually going to meet next month to go over the, I wouldn't say master plan, but the new facilities for passenger terminals, which are going to be great, to have a new international terminal that we need to add on to our domestic terminals. We're going to add on duty-free here very shortly, so you can buy your duty-free goods, as well as, we're already adding lots of restaurants and other things that makes it more fun while you're sitting there on a terminal. But with not as many lines here as LAX, people don't last that long in our terminal. They're there for 20 minutes, half hour, before they get on the plane or they get off, and they're on their way. But we're really excited to see all that growth coming in the future.
Oh, that's beautiful. So is that infrastructure going to be contained within the current footprint of the airport? Or are you looking to expand beyond that footprint?
No, we have a pretty good-sized footprint already that has been not developed yet. So not only are we looking at just the pasture area, but we have lots that surrounding land that the airport already owns, including across the street of Haven. For those who are familiar with the airport, we have about 200 acres across the street. So that's going to be also be developed here in the next few years. So we have a lot of development on the airport. Federal Express dumped a ton of money into the new facility. I think it's close to $300 million. And we have another big carrier coming in that we can't quite announce yet, but it's going to be just as equally as large. So we'll be the largest hub of cargo, air cargo in North America. We're one of the top 10 right now. I think we're one of the top two or three of export internationally of cargo, which is good for the airport financials. But the rest of us, we just care where you can fly, when you want to go on vacation, you want to go for business. But basically, the health of the airport is very strong because of both the cargo and the passenger growth.
Right, well, the health of the airport is very integral to the health of the overall region, because when you speak about economics and, you know, the taxes that are being paid out and what goes, what those taxes go towards. They go towards infrastructure, services, you know, education, healthcare. They go towards so many critical needs of a community, of a region. And so it is important that, you know, we all understand and realize why that matters and how it has that trickle-down effect through those, the tax revenue that's being generated.
Absolutely. And as we get more and more visitors coming to San Bernardino County to go on holiday and vacation, they'll spend the dollars at the hotels and it goes down to our restaurants. And we have a huge international visitors coming in just to go to Ontario Mills Mall. In fact, Ontario Mills Mall is the most visited location in California, more than Disneyland, just for the shopping that they have, which is not that far away from the airport. So we have a whole new sub-economy going there. And the county is actually investing in the next few years in some great, I guess, recreational activities. And Ontario alone, we're having a new Topgolf facility opening up in February or March. So we're looking forward to that, which is, you know, less than a mile away from the airport. You know, other venues, we're looking at our Grosse Park, a possibly developing a world-class surf park, where you can learn to surf in the Inland Empire.
Oh, my goodness.
And so these are all destination locations for travelers, as well as we already have, you know, the big concerts and the IE and everything else. So we're excited about the recreational opportunities, as well as the business here in the future for San Bernardino County.
Oh, my goodness. So I want to hear a little bit more about that surfing school that's going to be coming to San Bernardino County, because anybody that knows or is familiar with San Bernardino County, we're not very close to the ocean. In fact, we're surrounded, we're, large parts of it are in valleys and surrounded by mountainous topography. So let's talk a little bit more about that surfing school. That's just my little.
Yeah, no, it's on the drawing board right now. The contract hasn't been executed, but we're very much proceeding with it. But it would be a 60, 70-acre park that will allow, basically, you dial up any size wave you want. You want a Maui five-foot wave, you dial it in. If you want an Australia 10-foot wave, you can dial it in. And you can put over 200 or 300 surfers on once with this big park. And so there's that concentration of surfers is highest in Southern California anywhere in the world. But if you don't have the waves in the ocean, you can't practice. So this will allow the professionals and the amateurs or the wannabes alike to come down and try to surf, as well as the other integrated water parks with the lazy rivers and water slides and stuff on the side of it. So it's going to be an amusement park with water, but with the uniqueness of the top-of-the-line technology to develop waves. And so it's very exciting to look at it. It's going to be right there in the middle of Ontario. And so I think it'll be a destination as well for many people who enjoy that kind of sport.
Oh, my goodness, that is just remarkable. I cannot wait to see it. I mean, San Bernardino County is so advanced that they are now bringing in businesses that are going to be offering waves on demand. Really?
Yeah, so we'll surf in the desert here.
Yes, we're going to be surfing in the desert. I love it. Well, for those listening, I'm Yvette Walker on Southern California Business Report on ABC News and Talks, KMET 1490 AM, 98.1 FM, and KMET TV, talking to Kurt Hagman, Chairman of San Bernardino County Board of Supervisors, talking about the overall state of the county, business data, efforts the county has taken to support local businesses and create a thriving environment when we return.
Every two seconds, someone needs a blood transfusion. Be on the giving side. Livestream Blood Bank supports patients in 80 Southern California hospitals. Call 1-800-TRY-GIVING for more information and to set an appointment.
City of Hope is driven to making a difference in the lives of people with cancer and diabetes. We accomplish this by conducting innovative research and providing outstanding care. If you or a loved one has received a cancer diagnosis, go to cityofhope.org to learn more about how our innovative approach could change your outcome.
The University of Laverne is rated first in California for alumni satisfaction. Learn more about accelerated programs offered online and on campus in Laverne, Irvine, Ontario, Burbank, or College of the Canyons. Visit go.laverne.edu. The University of Laverne, go.laverne.edu.
Being sued and don't know who to turn to? The insurance company won't defend you and your family in a lawsuit? Stress no more. Call the Walker Law Group. We are the law on your side. Just call 909-989-3200, 909-989-3200.
Ontario International Airport is on to a better way to fly with over 65 daily non-stop flights to more than 20 major destinations and the easiest airport experience in Southern California. Visit flyonto.com/ontario to learn more about Ontario International Airport today.
Welcome back. For those listening, I'm Yvette Walker on Southern California Business Report on ABC News and Talks, KMET 1490 AM, 98.1 FM, and KMET TV, talking to Chairman Kurt Hagman of the Board of San Bernardino County Board of Supervisors, talking about the overall state of the county, business data, and efforts the county has taken to support local businesses. Thank you so much for being here with us today Supervisor Hagman.
It's my pleasure to be on. Thank you.
Wonderful. So before the break, we were talking about the airport and, of course, the waves on demand, which I'm going to be there on day one. I'm going to, I love to body surf. It's so much fun. But I don't have time to be driving down to the beach all the time, so it'll be very convenient. So with that said, let's go back to the airport and the economic impact that it has on our region. How important is international trade to the county's economic growth?
Oh, it's huge. And fortunately, the county's taken some very proactive steps the last six years to foster relationships. As you know, California in general is one of the biggest trading partners in the world of the Asia-Pacific countries. So we took that experience where I was with the state and brought it to the county, and we established three sister-city relationships so far. And so we're the gateway to Pacific Rim for not just import-export, but also now for manufacturing and other levels of direct investment. So the international trade generates significant unemployment and business development opportunities for that partnerships. For example, San Bernardino County has historically exported more, close to $100 million in products and goods each year to South Korea. So obviously, it was advantageous to start a sister-city relationship with them, which we did. And we made a sister-city relationship with Incheon Economic Free Trade Zone. And what they've been doing is bringing their businesses that want to locate in the United States targeted to San Bernardino County. So... So um, we also set up a, a trade, a city with, um, sister city with Taiwan, Taiwan in 2017. Both of those leaders and both of those countries are sending direct investment into our county, which obviously brings the dollars and development, but also all the job creation. But more importantly is what we're doing is finding that ability now to export our goods and services from our county directly to those countries. And what the role of the county has been is basically a facilitator, bringing business to business, um, bringing up the, the needs of our businesses with the wants of others and hosting, um, and facilitating those discussions and kind of handing them off and giving that, I guess clerical support. If you don't know how to export something out of the United States, we're there to help you do that. So we helped our business grow and expand as well.
That is absolutely remarkable. So it sounds to me like San Bernardino County in conjunction with the Ontario International Airport is positioned to basically be the economic gateway to North America, to the Western United States, or both? Or all of the above?
I think both. I mean, because most of the goods that we import into the United States, a lot of them um, come through ports of Long Beach and LA and now our airport in Ontario. So obviously logistics in, in that side is very big for us. But it also gives us the opportunity because we have the land to expand for those businesses and all the global economics and, and sometimes those policy changes changed business models. We noticed during the pandemic, a lot of manufacturing that was not here in the United States needs to be here. And they've been growing back here. So I have a lot of people um, starting to build and develop manufacturing facilities, which is really exciting for us to see those manufacturing jobs coming back to California after so long. So to keep those relations up, to keep those um, communication lines going, to help support our small and large businesses alike, developing, continuing to grow strong here in San Bernardino County is one of our important goals to do.
Absolutely. And I love the fact that when you are making these plans and these policies, you're very much aiming to create a sustainable economic environment and that, you know, manufacturing is coming back. That is absolutely remarkable. And that's going to add to this ecosystem of economics, create a more sustainable environment and really elevate all of the efforts for decades to come, I'm sure.
It come back to what our selling points are. We have land, we have the infrastructure, we, we're part of the international gateway to goods and services throughout the United States. And we have the personnel here, over two and a half million or 2.2 million people, average age 33, young families. So the future is here in San Bernardino County for that growth.
Absolutely. So let's talk a little bit more about what that workforce development looks like. Can you share more about the county's workforce development opportunities?
Oh, sure. You know, San Bernardino County is supposed to innovation corridor of close to two dozen colleges and universities located throughout the region. And they educate a strong diverse workforce, which we talked about, all the businesses need that strong, especially right now. Uh, every time I talk to my business owners, they're hurting for employees. And so we have that, that feedstock here with all these universities. We also um, have some great vocational training centers and apprenticeships throughout our um, industrial technical learning schools. They have one called um, INTECH, for example, they come out and teach very pragmatic schools and, and our students to um, certain services. So we have that going on too. And that's a public-private partnership with the California Community College System. So we have these strong connections with our educational system as well as our businesses to try to make sure we're preparing that workforce for the future to help them grow and be sustainable. Our Workforce Development Board in Department works for our Economic Development Department, targeting industry, industry sectors to make sure that we're trying to provide the, the right training for the right growth as we go forward here in the county.
That, that makes sense and it's thoughtful. And again, it speaks to the policies that are working and that are elevating the region as a whole. So for that, thank you so much. I know that there's a, a significant skills gap in the workforce and you are interfacing with some of those tech companies. Can you talk about what those environments look like and how those discussions occur when you're looking to place those students and those people, you know, people coming out of college with the businesses here that need the workforce, ready to hit the ground running?
Well, it's definitely out of, out of the colleges, but also starting at the high schools. But we have to, and we have some great districts that are working with their high schoolers and even junior high in some cases, teaching some of those or exposing them to some of the areas that could be potential workforce later. And they get excited about it. I have this one super tent that has their, I think sixth graders making drones, they can fly. Little kits that we help them out with, but to get them excited about drone technology. And um, we have another one working with solar and green energy. And as you go up, just to expose them to these skills, it doesn't mean you have to get a four-year degree anymore to make a good living, especially in San Bernardino County. We have great location opportunities as well. So it's really trying to keep a handle on where we're going, what the needs are. And um, and communicating, communicating back and forth with the business sectors, meeting with them, hearing what their problems are, and most of it is labor induced, and how we could spend our dollars in training and work with our community colleges and vocational schools to make sure we're training people for the right jobs.
Right. And that makes absolute sense. And I love that you are taking that perspective and you're setting your aim, right? You're setting your aim on where you want to lead our region in terms of the economic environment. And when you're taking that leadership position and integrating those policies, that is exactly why we are in the position as a county that we are today because of the leadership of people like you and your colleagues that are all going in the same direction and making sure that the policies that are being implemented make sense and benefit the region. And you know, not only the region for today, but for generations to come is the way I see it.
We're excited for the future of San Bernardino County, that's for sure.
Definitely. So how does the county continue to support business startups and business growth? Because I know that there's a lot of business startups, a lot of business growth and a lot to come.
Well, it's really a basic philosophy, stay out of business way, first of all. Um, government can be a very much a, you know, tampered down entrepreneurship. So we're here to set the environment where entrepreneurs can come in, really try to grow and be supportive of that growth. That means we have to be flexible, which is difficult for governments sometime to do. But that's the first rule that we have, do no harm. But then secondly is to figure out what those needs are. Can we keep up with the need for high-speed internet, for example? Can we keep a need for um, a good, strong labor force? Can we keep up? You know, building the infrastructure need for our fast growth for residential and commercial? And try to make that master plan 10, 15, 30 years in advance that we're building to. Uh, but I'm a big believer in letting the entrepreneurs be entrepreneurs and, and get out of their way, but support them where we can. When, you know, things like when COVID-19 hit us all, um, that was very hard for small business. We're the first county to come out and give direct payments to small business. Um, called the COVID Business Compliance Program, I think in the nation, at least California. And the others came back and followed, but try to get, you know, pump dollars at the source where they hire folks. Um, and make sure that we kept those jobs here and make sure they can bounce back quickly. And we see the numbers then bouncing back very quickly. But try to be responsive to the overall need. And as we see changes in the economy to come back, as our workforce development department will do, and take industries that may be slowing down because evolution and take those employees and retrain them for future growth in other sectors that are growing. So there's roles for government, but to most part, let them be business, um, be hopefully a business-friendly county of rules and regulations and allow them to do what they do best, which is grow their business and hire our residents going forward.
Right. And the environment is supportive and conducive to that, to that end. And a perfect example of that is the fact that in 2020, California State University of San Bernardino launched the School of Entrepreneurship, which is the first of its kind in California and one of only 15 existing worldwide. Let's talk about that because to have an educational institution in our region where there's only 15 other institutions like it in the world offering this program, we are very, very um, fortunate to have this. So let's talk about this program a little bit.
No, they're doing, they're doing a great job and not everyone can be a skilled or not everyone should be skilled to go work for someone else. Um, and there's a lot of creative people out there and you see those business startups all the time. And we have some great um, startup history here in San Bernardino County, Taco Bell, McDonald's and others. And so we can create that environment where they're creative and that we have the support network for it. So we're very thankful that San Bernardino is doing that, that's starting it off that, those courses, but we want entrepreneurs. They're making the backbone of all our business and all our hiring here throughout the state. So if we can support it any way we can, we will.
I love it. And can you speak to any incubators within the county that lend themselves to these efforts as well?
Well, we talked about um, the IFES um, program we have and the school of, uh, well, it's Cal State University, San Bernardino. You know, is the lead one, the latest one, but this helps small business grows. We also have Econ Development Department that provides a number of important programs with infrastructure such as, you know, we let them use a common office. They have computers, software and things that they can help with. They need to walk into that. And we have workforce assistance there, business plan development. So we have coaches for those who want to be entrepreneurs. They come to one of our one stops, our business incubator centers that we can help them start with some of the basics. And we also work with many of the regional uh, agencies and target business development, including the Women's Business Center Program as well as um, and then Empire Economic Business Development Center as well. That's another one we use. As well as the CVC Small Business Finance Corporation. So there's a lot of infrastructure out there that we need to bring together. And at these one stops with our staff, we can, you know, if somebody has a great idea, we can bring them in. How do I apply for a small business loan? How do I, you know, make a business plan? So I got applied for that loan. These are the services that we try to help a, a young entrepreneur, a young business startup, you know, help them help themselves become a successful small business later.
Right. And that is such a wealth of support in education and infrastructure, in coaching and mentorship. So for anyone listening that's interested in pursuing any of these amazing opportunities, please tell us how they can reach out and learn more about it and where it is they need to go to put their ideas and launch their entrepreneurial dreams here in our region.
Oh, we love to help them out. Probably the first place, we have all those resources out there, but the probably the one place I would guide them to is our, our website on San Bernardino County Economic Development Department. We have a lot of links, a lot of resources there and reach out to them. Our, our staff, our experts there will help you point in the right directions and find those resources as they want to start to grow their business.
Beautiful. And I will add the link to the recorded video. So anyone that catches this later, they can go find it and have a direct link to those services because they're absolutely phenomenal. And I'm incredibly proud that our region and our leaders have put forth policy that is going to advance all of these efforts. It's, it just blows my mind. I get excited about this stuff. So.
We're excited too. We're, we're excited to have those young families here that are starting businesses um, and see success stories come up. And it just shows our numbers. I mean, we talked about how strong the economy is here in San Bernardino County. We were more than double what we thought it would be in our prediction of last year's budget, even during the COVID. So um, you know, our businesses are doing well and they have recovered. And that's because we have great residents and great business leaders here in the, in the Empire that are taking those risks and creating that opportunity for themselves.
Absolutely. Well, it doesn't hurt to have leadership that actually supports you and is paving the way to move everything along. Brilliant. Thank you so much for that. So can you also talk about the proactive work the county has been recognized for in a number of ways recently?
Uh, we're very blessed. The last six years, it seems like we set new records for this. We're, we're part of different associations. One of them is called NACO, National Association of Counties. And each year it seems like San Bernardino County comes back with the number one number of awards for innovation in different areas. So I'm very proud of them and, and each year we bring back more. So this year was 60 in 2021, um, which I think is a new record of awards for the National Association of Counties for innovation. And um, so I'm very proud of our team at, at the county and our staff and there, we've been trying to set an environment, not only for our residents and our businesses to be innovative, but also for our county departments to be innovative and grow the way they provide their services and use modern technology and, and go ahead and take that risk. It's like the private sector has to do. And some things will work out, some things won't, but we want to advance the way we provide services. And, and so this year, very pleased to see how many awards San Bernardino County has gotten for 60. And we're doing some just amazing things. Like one of the things we just introduced is a virtual government center that we put into each county library. So if you're used to having to go to recorder's office or go to a department in the county, the future is going to be basically going to a county library or even on your phone to do all your business virtually for, so you can put in, you know, fill out your forms right there, um, pay your, pay your whatever fee you may have, fill out your receipt without having to drive two or three hours away to a county facility. So we're always trying to reinvent ourselves, the way we provide services. And so it's very um, just very happy for the, the work that they've done to be able to receive 60 awards when they come.
Oh my goodness, that is remarkable. I love that. Again, you are always looking for ways to provide services and enhance those opportunities and conveniences for our region. So with that said, Supervisor Hagman, if you had an unlimited budget, right? Just money is no object. What would be your dream project for our county?
Well, fortunately I get to work on some of those right now. There are a number of ones that we're trying to do. Um, but I think we found out this last year how important high-speed internet is. And I have about 15% of, maybe a little bit less of our residents have under speed or no internet. And I think that's a game changer for those who don't have the ability to hook up. You know, my mountain communities or some of my desert communities, that if we're able to hook them up to high-speed internet, it allows them access to the rest of the world. And education uh, opportunities, uh, medical opportunities, business opportunities. So that's something with the help of the infrastructure bill coming from Congress. And what we were planning before that bill even came through is one of the projects I had on my list to do is how to connect communities to the, to the internet and, and high-speed level. You know, we're testing out Starlink for that ability as well. So it's not just running wires everywhere, but also use newer technologies to advance that. Um, but that's, that's a big part of that, to really to connect my residents to the opportunities that are here. And there are so many growth and opportunities. It's very um, very positive time for the Indian Empire and San Bernardino County particularly. With the growth that we have, there's so much opportunity for our residents to really make a difference in their lives and their kids' lives going forward. And also to receive information from them as we're doing this infrastructure build-out, as we're starting to plan for the next 10, 15, 20 years, what are things they would like to see to make them live, work and play in the county that they, that they reside in? And not just the work opportunities and the, and the ability to buy a house, maybe the first time it's coming out here, but the ability to stay here, enjoy their life and not want to leave the county because there's recreational opportunities and culture and, and all the rest of it. So it's a great time for us as staff to, and, and elected bodies to receive that information as well as the opportunity to set that vision. And I think this is a time period, the next four or five years where all the stars lined up with the federal dollars coming in, with our economy doing very well. And to really set the stage for the county for the next couple of generations, um, if we do things right now. So it's an exciting time for us.
Absolutely. I'm so excited. I am also very curious about how that Starlink Wi-Fi system is going to work when it does come online. Can you speak a little bit about how that is going to look?
Yeah. And there's different levels of connectivity, but the, the premise of it is instead of having like the dish network on your garage, you have a, a little dish on top of your roof that will go to the satellite. And what the difference with these satellites are, is a very low level. So latency is very, very little. So it's very high speed, no delay in the connection. They're not meant to do a neighborhood at a time. They're meant to do a house or a building at a time. But you can get different throughput plans. Like for our county facilities, we pay for the higher throughput. So we could do um, like we have at our, our parks where the camping RV is. So we can basically give out internet to everybody who's camping there with one satellite. But most are going to be individual ones for people's homes. If you have a cabin in the mountains, you have your trailer that you like to go to on the weekends, you have the ability to get high-speed internet there. But for some areas in my county, they don't have any infrastructure, either cellular or wired, to have that high-speed internet. So this is an opportunity for us to partner up with Starlink and other companies like that to get them satellite communications in areas that it's not feasible to run a, a fiber optic, you know, 30 miles to a community of five people or something like that. So it is a lot of great opportunities. We're engaged with our consultants and to make that master plan for the county. But if I go this, you know, wave my wand and say in four years, we're going to have every person who wants access to the internet and high-speed internet, they can have it. That would be my wish. Cause then I think it really has the evening playing field. If you want to have entertainment, watch your shows. If you want to have your medical checkups virtually, if you want to take your school or course halfway around the world um, for college, you could do that with that access that we have. We found out how important that was later. for college, you could do that with that access that we have. We found out how important that was later. But there's many other issues and, and needs in the county as well, but we're going to be working on that as a team.
Right. And I understand, obviously, Wi-Fi connectivity, internet connection is also critical for healthcare.
Absolutely. We saw that now with the virtual visits that you don't have to always drive somewhere to get your doctor's checkup. Now you can go see someone five minutes later and be able to, you know, virtually get your, your cold medicine or flu medicine, or whatever the case may be. And later, as we've come up with wearables onto those systems that you can be plugged into a network where the doctor can, can monitor you from his office, you know, 30 miles away and not have to go there. So it brings up that convenience. We find a lot of people don't go to the doctor when they need to because they don't want to wait in line or it takes them three weeks to get an appointment to go see somebody. This will help with that total healthness of the county as well.
I love it because not only are you supporting business to be able to do business, but you're supporting our residents to stay healthy to continue to do business, which is critical in today's day, you know, and it always brings me back to the fact that if we took care of ourselves as well, if we took care of our cars, we would be in tremendous shape. And I hope we all leave with that message and we take care of ourselves as well or better than we take care of our cars. So for everyone listening today, I have a big thank you to give to Supervisor Kurt Hagman. Thank you so much for joining our program. I'm so excited to have you today and looking forward to having you on in the future to give us future updates. It's always incredible news, always a great day to hear from you, Supervisor Hagman.
It's been my pleasure, Yvette. Thank you so much for having us and covering this great Inland Empire in San Bernardino County. If you're a San Bernardino County resident, you should be happy and thrilled. We have a great future here.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. So for everyone listening today, look for us on Facebook, YouTube, LinkedIn, and Instagram. Check us out on sbrtalk.com. And don't forget to download the free live streaming app on Google Play or the Apple App Store. Don't miss my interview with Mr. Jeffrey Burham, Chairman of National Community Renaissance. In 1991, using his own resources, Mr. Burham co-founded National Community Renaissance in response to the need for affordable housing in San Bernardino County. Five years later, wanting to provide more than shelter to low-income families and seniors, he co-founded the Hope Through Housing Foundation to offer programs and services that transform the lives of residents. Today, National Core is one of the largest national nonprofit affordable housing developers in the country. Burham is a longtime affordable housing advocate. Early in his career, he was one of 22 real estate professionals to be appointed by Congress to serve on the Millennial Housing Commission, whose mission was to make recommendations for federal housing policy to legislators. Check it out, everyone. Next week, we will feature Aquanetta Warren, elected as mayor in December of 2010 and overwhelmingly re-elected in 2014 and 2018. Aquanetta Warren is serving her third term as the mayor of the City of Fontana. Mayor Warren focuses her administration on bolstering economic development, creating educational opportunities, and advocating for a healthier community. During her eight years as a councilwoman and now third term as a mayor, Warren has spearheaded significant economic growth and has played a critical role in positioning Fontana as a supply chain hub that provides critical goods throughout the world. Mayor Warren emphasizes that Fontana is open for business and works directly with the Fontana Chamber of Commerce to support the needs of the business community. Ensuring that every child in Fontana receives the highest level of education and career readiness, Warren formed the Mayor's Education Coalition, a network of schools, businesses, and local leaders committed to preparing students for job and career opportunities after graduation. Realizing that a strong economy requires a healthy community, Mayor Warren founded the award-winning and model program across the nation, Healthy Fontana. Stemming from Healthy Fontana is the Fontana Walks Program. What began as a challenge to the community to cumulatively walk 2 billion steps in 2017 has turned into monthly walks with nearly 9 billion steps to date. Everyone listening today, we'll see you next week. Don't miss it.
This has been the Southern California Business Report with Yvette Walker on KMET 1490 AM, FM 98.1, and ABC News Radio affiliate. A show dedicated to highlighting successful Southern California businesses and the people behind them. Remember to visit the podcast page on the KMET website.